Welcome, everyone, to the February 22 City Council Work Session. An episode number...
(laughing).
I'm going to say 112.
Episode, hmm, of Envision Eugene.
It was February of 2010.
Season three, episode 14.
Thank you.
Season three, episode 14.
So today, we're going to talk about a couple more aspects as we wind our way toward making final decisions. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn over to Lisa in just a moment, but it has been a pretty interesting journey all along. And my intent is to make my recommendation mid-March before you go on break.
It's not far.
At that time, you won't be asked to make any decisions at that particular meeting, but to at least get my recommendation and then we'll go through some more public process and bring that back to you. But I'll turn over to Lisa for today.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilwoman. So we are here today. We have two separate distinct items to talk to you. One is actually holdover from a December work session, and then the other is coming to you for the first time. And joking aside, we are reaching, I don't know whether it's the season finale or the season finale, but we are coming into the home stretch in terms of bringing all the information before you. So Jason Dedrick's going to start and talk about flexible implementation, and then Alyssa Hansen will talk about the urban growth boundary study areas.
Great.
Okay. Thanks, Lisa. Once again, my name's Jason Dedrick with the Planning Division. I'm going to hop right in here and run through our presentation. There'll be time for questions, as usual, here at the end. So primarily, what we're going to talk about today is the seventh pillar of our draft Envision Eugene proposal, which deals with flexible implementation. That will be the section that I'll talk about, and then we'll pass it off to Alyssa Hansen, who will talk about UGB study areas. So as a reminder, we have seven pillars as part of Envision Eugene. We have spent a lot of time bringing you up to speed on the first six of these. We've talked kind of around the seventh pillar, but today's work session is about spending deliberate time talking about flexible implementation. So you'll learn more about the work that we've been doing on this pillar. As a reminder, the goal of this pillar is to help ensure that the goals of Envision Eugene are realized to their full potential. So it's not just about having strategies and tactics for the next 20 years, but it's about making sure that those strategies and tactics actually go into place and have the intended effect. And so this pillar is about making sure that we check in on those intended effects over the time period. It also really accounts for the fact that we already know we're going to be 100 percent chance of being wrong. And so this pillar is really that ability to allow us to look at things over time and find out where we were wrong and make adjustments if we need to. So there are several strategies within this pillar. I'm going to review each of these and give you a little information on what we've been working on. The first is to create an ongoing monitoring system. We've created a list of different data points that we intend on potentially tracking over the 20-year period in an annual kind of ongoing increment. That list is attached to your packet as Attachment B. There are a lot of data points here. I think the biggest thing is that we want to make sure that we're only collecting data that actually answers the questions we want to ask. We're not just running around collecting data that may not be useful. So we're going to make sure that before we finalize this list and put any new systems into place, that we're actually collecting data that answers the questions. There are some instances where we aren't currently collecting some of this data. Some of this will be new, and so we may need to create new systems or tools to collect that data. So we'll be identifying what those are and really making sure that we're doing institutional change around collecting data if we need to. It's not just about setting up the system, but it's about how we actually collect the data and making sure staff are trained appropriately to collect the data in the right way and the way we intended. So some examples of data we're going to be collecting would be tracking our mix of housing. There's been a lot of discussion about single-family versus multifamily housing. We want to make sure that we have the information to track that over time to see how that's actually playing out. We want to be able to track our supply of vacant land so that we know how we're tracking on whether or not we're using that up as quickly as we thought we might. And another example would be tracking our density of housing that we're building. We're making some estimates of how dense we think housing will develop. We want to track data to make sure that it's going the way that we thought it was, and if not, then adjusting. Some of these new tools that we'll have, for example, we're not doing a great job of tracking redevelopment on employment lands. So creating a mechanism that allows us to indicate how much new space from employees we create on redevelopment lands. Also, trying to identify what our commercial vacancy is. It's very difficult to know how much, how many empty desks and what the vacant space is currently in town, so working on that. And then finally, we do have a lot of employment data for Lane County or for the metro area. We want to do a better job of having data specifically for Eugene, so we're working on systems for that as well. This list that's in your packet will be refined. There are, we will likely identify strategies that currently haven't been identified, and we want to make sure we're tracking what we need to tell us whether or not those strategies pay off or not. So this list will be refined as we get closer to finishing the whole project. Our second strategy is to basically take all that data and make sure that it's accessible to the public and prepare a report. And so we can just look up the road to Corvallis to find an example of a city that's doing annual or biannual monitoring reports. And I think the real goal here is to make sure it's user-friendly, whether it's charts, graphs, tables, or text, finding a way to communicate the information in a way that resonates with people. So that's going to be an important part of making sure that the data has a home and the outset. Next, the important part about our plan is that we're creating a dynamic plan. Again, as we know, things are going to change over time. Things are going to come up that we hadn't anticipated, so the plan needs to be dynamic. So the plan will actually contain the policy language that says how we will check in and what we will do, and I'll talk in a minute about what that will be. And the plan will allow us to respond to things that happen in the community we might not be anticipating. So if there are changes to state law, or for example, here's a picture of the Valley River parking lots. What if something happens there that we hadn't anticipated? Another example would be the fairgrounds. What if something happens there that we aren't currently anticipating? So as significant changes occur, we want to make sure that our plan is dynamic enough to allow us to change based on that. And finally, phasing our public services. This is already a tool that is in our toolbox, so to speak, through our annexation policies and our capital improvement plans. We're already phasing how development occurs, and so we want to continue to do that over time. So the next strategy gets a little more specific around the idea of a five-year evaluation. So what that would mean is we would evaluate and report on the monitoring data we've collected from the previous five years. We'd prepare a report comparing what we assumed with what actually happened over that five-year period, and then we would bring that back to you in a work session or a series of work sessions to talk about what that data means. We aren't proposing at this point that the five-year evaluation would have a mandatory adjustment to any policies, but what we are saying is it's entirely possible that things could happen in that five-year period that we had not anticipated that we need to make changes for. For example, a new state law that limits how land can be used we hadn't realized. If that happens, clearly that could have a significant impact, and we may need to adjust our policies. So that's kind of what we're looking for on the five-year check-in. In looking at the 10-year evaluation, this is really the point in time where we kind of sit down and take a long look at what is actually... So again, we'll report on that data, hold work sessions, and then in a much more deliberate way, consider adjustments to our strategies or other actions. And what that might include, for example, is extending facilities to areas faster than we thought we may need to or slower than we thought we may have needed to. It may also extend the time period of our existing UGBs. So for example, we're planning for the next 20 years, and we're planning based on population growth. If that growth is slower than we had thought, our UGB might actually be, might qualify us for more than a 20-year period if our growth had been slower. So that's one possible outcome. Redesignation really is just, has anything happened in the intervening 10 years where we want to rethink how we're using land? Should areas that are designated for one use perhaps be designated for another use? So that's something else we want to consider. And then finally, if there are any changes to the UGB that may be needed. And I've mentioned one of those. For example, if stormwater regulations change at the state level, that may have an impact. Or any other changes to our code that happen in that 10-year period could impact how much land we need and whether or not we have enough. There are some reasons behind why we are recommending this kind of two-tier check-in with the five-year versus the 10-year, and the 10-year being the more significant. And I want to review for you kind of why, what the rationale is behind that. So here's a chart that shows you our population growth over the last 20 years. And what this shows you is the percentage growth per year. It doesn't show total population. So for example, in 1991, we grew at 4%. 1992 at 1%. 1993 at, you know, 0.7%. And so over that entire period, our average population growth was about 1.8% per year. So what this allows us to do is, say, take an example of, let's say we had completed Envision Eugene in 1994. And at that time, the projection for population growth was 1.8% per year, which was the long-term average. So five years later, in 1999, we would take a look back and we'd say, how did we do? And what we'd find, as you can see there, is that the population growth had actually been 2.2% over that five-year period. That's about 25% higher than what we thought would happen. And so we might be sitting there saying, wow, we may need more residential land than we thought. The caution here is that once you get to the 10-year check-in, you can kind of see what happened. Population growth was not as rapid as expected, and coincidentally, when you look at the whole 10-year period, the average was 1.8%. So if you had waited for the 10-year cycle, you would have found that you were right on with where you thought. And one of the reasons for that is that our population tends to track with larger economic cycles in the country. And so this next chart shows that. Here's our employment growth in Lane County, again, as a percentage per year over the last 30 years. So we grew, jobs grew at 2% in 1979, they grew at, or they shrunk by 2.5% in 1980. And the average over that period was about 1.4% growth. That's that red line. So what's important to note here is the cyclical nature of employment growth, and this is not just here in Lane County, but around the country. So for example, in the early 80s, we had a recession, significant job loss, and then significant job gain. You can see we had years where we gained 4%, 5%, which was way above the average. So that was the early 80s. Again, in the early 90s, 10 years later, we saw the recession recovery cycle. Early 2000s, the recession, the recovery cycle. Here we are 10 years later, recession. We're hoping that the recovery cycle looks like this. And the interesting thing about this is this continues back for 30 years prior to this. We are on a fairly good 10-year cycle in this country. Now, that doesn't mean that that's where we're going. Perhaps things have fundamentally changed such that we won't see that. But at least looking back, what you find is that had you checked in at any time in the middle here, you may have not been able to fully grasp the whole cycle. And so that's one of the reasons why we're thinking more about a 10-year check-in as being the time that really picks up the cycles that happen in our community. So the next strategy is to make sure that our code is embodying the vision of Envision Eugene and the community's vision. So as opposed to in the past where perhaps we've had these large-scale efforts to overhaul the code, we're looking at this as an ongoing effort. It's maintenance of our code. Anything from small-level kind of legislative changes to larger level, making sure our policy fits, our code fits with our vision. And so it will be an ongoing process. And really, it's about making our code more user-friendly as well. So for example, here's an example of the Walnut Station form-based code, which is much more visual in nature. And so kind of in an incremental basis, trying to make our code more user-friendly as well as consistent with our vision. Our next strategy is to make sure that as we're being flexible and dynamic, that we're planning for what's going on around the area. And so this is making sure that we're collaboratively planning. The important part about this is that although we have separate urban growth boundaries in the region, we all share, in many cases, similar facilities. So it's important that we, for example, plan for regional public facilities, and here's our metro area public facilities plan, so continuing on that work. Regional transportation and climate planning, as evidenced by work with MPO. And then as we're talking about farmland and natural resources, we can't just look at Eugene. We have to look at what's happening regionally. And of course, the Lane Livability Consortium work is an embodiment of this regional work. So this is really just saying, we're going to continue to plan regionally even though we're now going to have our own UGB. The sixth strategy is to make sure that we can think about design and development in our community from a different perspective. So there's been a lot of discussion about having our code in general be more of a form-based code, either in areas or in total, similar to Walnut Station. Thinking about design review, here's an example of Community Designs Guideline brochure from the City of Portland that has individual design guidelines by neighborhood. It doesn't necessarily mean we do that, but it means having a more design-oriented focus as we develop in the future. And so that, again, is about being flexible, being dynamic with how the community vision changes over time. So where are we going from here on this pillar? As I mentioned, we are going to continue to refine that list of data to make sure that we get it down to the essential data and that we have the right systems in place to collect it. We also are going to be continuing to process code revisions. For example, in April, we'll have multifamily code revisions coming to you for your review. And we will continue to bring through code revisions to Envision Eugene even before we get to completion. Revisions that we already know we're going to make, we'll continue to bring those forward. And then finally, preparing the actual implementing policy language that goes in our new comprehensive plan that really holds us to making sure that we do these check-ins and all the other things that are in this pillar. So that's it, and at this point, we're going to take a break for questions on this content.
Okay. Is your hand up? Nope. Is your hand up?
Just a quick question, and I will have more later. Facilities, we talked about facility. Can you describe what...
Sure. Kind of basic infrastructure, water, electricity, roads, things like that. As we, in areas that are currently in the UGB, our capital improvement plan specifies how we bring services to those areas and facilities to those areas. If we have any expansion areas, it would be the same thing, so...
I just wanted to be clear what facilities might be.
Yes.
Roads, it means pipes and wires.
Yes.
So I have a couple comments, and one is I understand the reasoning you have for the five- and 10-year reporting back, but I also think that you and all of us come and go in shorter periods of time. And so from my perspective, so that we have a sense of staying on track or knowing where we've been and where we're heading, to have some kind of brief update on a more ongoing basis would just help us stay in tune. When I think of the whole big effort that was around sort of great streets, and then we all sort of lost sight of what that was all about and weren't even sure we still bought into it. So I just think this has to be kind of a, to the extent of not making the same work you have to do in the five- and 10-year, but it needs to be more iterative. And then I just want to be sure that council takes a really good look at your list of things that you're going to be getting data on, to be sure that it's specific enough and speaks to the things that people really want information on. I think that's just something, sometimes we don't do that until after we get our first report and say, why didn't we get a report on that? So I'm just pushing for people to take a really good look at it at the front end. And then I want to be sure that it's direct, and I'll try to say this the right way. A lot of this is about what we learn, but I want to be sure we're also looking at it from what we're trying to achieve. And so how do we see through the data that's coming out how we're moving on the goals we set for ourselves economically and in other ways? So to me, I want a better way of, as we're ticking through time, knowing how we're moving in the direction that we say we've all said we want to go, and how to use this kind of work we're doing to give us that kind of update, so we're not just responding. And when we make this available to the public, I want to be sure that we not only give them data, but we really give them conclusions about what that means, because some people are columns readers and charts readers, and some people just need it in plain old, this is what we see here. And I guess the other, my other thing would be to say, be sure somehow in this we're, have something that identifies how we're doing it, protecting our neighborhoods with the, whether it's through opportunity sitting or infill compatibility or some of the things we're trying. How is that working? How is that helping us or not helping us? Because I think those are the kind of things we want to see how they're working, and we may change our minds if it isn't. Okay. Mike?
Two days in a row where I agree almost entirely with everything the mayor said. I'm not sure exactly what to do here.
Me, I don't know what to do with that either.
I'm not sure what to do with that at all. Yeah, a lot to be, a little bit.
It's turning to remind us.
Yeah, maybe so. I want to ask a question here with regard to this seventh pillar, and I'm trying to be careful because there's, I work in an environment professionally where there's some crossover here. So I want to ask a question that doesn't lead to any kinds of conflicts or problems, but I want to ask one that I think is helpful to the city and to the taxpayer and to the citizen. Okay? I'm aware that technology exists today, that you could create in one of maybe many different sorts of environments, real-time analysis of this, that isn't, you know, a five-year check-in or a 10-year check-in, but a real-time, every day, up-to-date, look on a website, see a picture, know where everything is, real-time environment. Why is it we aren't shooting for that?
Let me answer this, Jason. I think we are shooting for having real-time information available, and not just for the purposes of being able to draw trends over time periods, as Jason's been talking about for the purposes of Envision Eugene, but even just on a daily basis for builders or for permit applications. I think there's a lot of, there's a wealth of data. The question is, what platform do you use? And so we've been looking at a number of different systems. One obvious point is cost and what can we afford to do and within the resources that we have. But then also, there's a compatibility with some of the existing systems that we use for tracking permits and land use applications. And so we're looking at those, and I think our goal would be to have something that works on a day-to-day basis that's also blends in with our need to have long-term tracking. So we're looking at that comprehensive approach.
Okay. Well, it seems to me that another piece that's very important to me, as the mayor touched on, the aspirational piece of this. I was going to write a piece for the paper and didn't get the opportunity to do it that kind of tied in some of the points we talked about last time with the industrial land base, where we have a lot of goals that we're trying to set out and look at with long-term picture of where we want to be in Envision Eugene. And in a lot of instances, we're taking benchmarks and different rules for how to set up the game from where we think we're going to be rather than where we want to be. And I'd like to see us doing more to be setting this up towards the aspirational than we're doing right now, rather than looking at the safe harbor thing that we can live with that we know will keep us safe with state law, looking at the creative of, how do we create the reality that we envision with a creative new way to look at how we accomplish and how we accommodate state law in the process? So I hope we're really working harder towards that, especially like, you know, with the industrial land base, whether the growth rate is what the state economist thinks we're going to do, or whether it's what we want to do to comply with our economic long-term plans. So I hope we do the same with this. Thank you.
I'm going to turn to Alan, but before that, I would just say there's probably a tension in this between what you're learning in the short term and what is aspirational and what shows as trends over time, and that's the kind of, I don't know how you put all those things together, but that's probably what we're going to be wrestling with here. Alan, you're next, and then George, and was it George Brown? Yes. And then Pat, and then Chris.
So I agree with everything the mayor said and everything that Mike said. I guess...
It's not here to get it either.
I guess, yeah. Right. The other day, I noticed to him that we did six, eight to nothing votes, and he didn't say anything about it. The real-time stuff is interesting to me, but the process has to be a more holistic and more long-term view. And it's interesting to know where we are on the dial, but we don't want to jerk the land use system around, because when we look at those graphs about our growth, you can see that it's not a smooth, steady line like we all look at in the planning documents. So we want to have that kind of long-term view. And I think that what you've done so far makes a lot of sense, and the five- and 10-year and the other strategies make a lot of sense. Come a long way from jaws of uncertainty. It's really good. Questions I had about...
(laughing).
You only get to drink once, because I only get to say it once. Strategy four, evaluating and adjusting through the code implementation program. I wonder if you could talk a little about how that, what that looks like as we move forward, and also strategy five, when we're, how do we plan moving forward with our partners geographically when we have separate UGBs, and how does that process, what does that process look like?
Regarding the code, the code work, I think part of that is the realization that we've been up here, kind of a higher level, talking about our visions and goals, and we need to make sure that all of that translates down to the code level. And we know that that's not all going to happen in one fell swoop, this massive code change. So it's really about making sure that those things come down over time and get built in, and that we're really, that's kind of the implementation phase of Envision Eugene, making sure that we codify all the things that we've talked about. And again, the important part of that is the ongoing part. It's not necessarily going to be like a minor code amendment process where here's this big process. It's meant to be more something that's ongoing in nature. So that's kind of the code end of things. In terms of the collaborative planning, I think it's really about just keeping the door open to recognizing that we are part of a region. I think there's a temptation to say that now we have our own UGB, that we don't need to do regional planning anymore. And clearly, we have regional plans, we have facilities and other things that cross UGB boundaries, and so we have to continue doing that work. So this, I think, is making it very clear that there's no intent to stop doing regional planning just because we now have our UGB, and that the only reason we regionally plan is because we had a shared county. I think it's to make it very clear to the public that that's the reason that we want to continue doing that work. What it means, it's hard to say. I mean, obviously, we'll keep planning regionally for things like climate and energy and transportation and public facilities. Might we be planning differently for economic development in the future, more at a regional level? That certainly is a possibility, and I think this leaves the door open to that rather than saying we won't.
Yeah, I guess, you know, when I think of strategy four about the codes, I think of the two processes that we've had in the last while, which is the minor code amendment and LUCAU, the land use code update. And those were, the land use code update was massive. I mean, if we do that, that's lumpy, and I think, and minor code amendment, even so it was minor, it still was a pretty big process for us to work our way through. And I like the idea of having it be more of an ongoing process than it would be to have these kind of lumpy, really intensive things. And it also allows us to not say, well, we'll wait until we get to that big process to deal with that issue. We can deal with things in a more timely manner.
I think if you think of the scale of the first round of the infill compatibility amendments we brought forward, and then the ones that are going to come to you next month, there's a little bit of momentum gaining that has to occur, because previously, we did the major code amendment, the LUCAU, and then the minor code amendment, which was actually fairly significant. And I think that there was a sense that we had to get it exactly right, we had to get everything in there, and so that then sort of bogs it down and takes longer. So maybe it's about building credibility or leading, showing by, you know, leading that we actually are, we do have the capacity to make these changes and make them more confident. And so, I mean, it's my goal that we're doing at least two code amendments a year, but that they're small, they're tweaks, and they're adjustments, and then they're livability amendments in a way that reflect our Envision Eugene.
I like that part.
George Brown.
Thank you. Thanks a lot for this presentation. I really appreciate these graphs here. I don't really have a lot of questions, so I just want to make a couple comments. I mean, you know, we absolutely have to plan, and we absolutely have to aspire to improve things. But these charts, it's really striking, there's so much that's out of our control. We're so, I mean, in spite of everything we do and the planners and everyone's done for the last few decades, and all the wonderful things they've planned, you still have these tremendous swings here that are totally out of our control, and they seem to fall in patterns, and so it goes on for 30 years beyond what we're showing. But we still have to keep planning. And then, you know, this whole process here, it has forced us to kind of pretend that Springfield doesn't exist. It's kind of, but we have to do it, as the state told us that we do. But you're right, we still have to participate in regional planning with the county and with Springfield, with all the other old towns, because we already do. I mean, you know, the fire, the fire response teams are coordinated now, and the metropolitan wastewater management system is, you know, will probably be that way with water at some point, as we see, UAB seeks a second water source and partners with Springfield. So that will definitely still go on, and it's the only way to plan for the future, really. Thanks.
Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, you know...
A couple of things, you know, obviously, we don't want to jerk the land use system around, and we want to maintain as smooth a, smoother curve as we possibly can, but Jason pointed out a few things that cause us to potentially jerk the land use system around, and that is changes in state regulations, dramatic climate change, for instance. So I think Councilor Clark brings up a very good point about looking at things real-time, looking at things as they go along and not waiting for five years. And I think, Lisa, that you did concur with that, that we'll use whatever opportunity we have to look at things as things go on, without jerking the land use system around, but making sure that we are able to respond quickly and not look back a year later and say, oh, boy, we should react to that. So I think that your response to Councilor Clark really covered my concerns, that we're not looking at things on a regular basis, that five years and 10 years are great checkpoints, but between five years and 10 years, and all along the way, if something happens, we need to be able to respond to it, and we need to have a plan in place to act quickly, should we need to act quickly. I'm confident that that's what I recommend that you're going, so thank you for bringing that out. The second thing is a question, and it's based upon a comment that you made, Jason. We're on a fairly regular 10-year cycle in this, in the, in the community. 10 years picks up the cycle as it emerges, and you made a comment, as evidenced by work with the MPO. And I just wanted to touch on that a little bit. Now, we're a city council, and we do our deliberation here at this table, and then the MPO has deliberations beyond the council deliberations. And I want to just get a feeling for how much of our deliberation can potentially be superseded by MPO deliberation.
Well, specific to our Envision Eugene plan, the MPO doesn't have a adopting role as a joint body. The individual bodies, obviously, the county and Springfield, will be part of the deliberations and adoption of our formal package that moves forward. I think, as Jason was referring more to, the regional planning that occurs in terms of whether it's transplan or other regional coordination that we do, working with the state on the climate, Senate Bill 1059 kind of work. And so, unless I'm missing something, I think that's the distinction. It's not that the MPO has a formal role in this land use. They're not a land use body.
Okay, so the work with the MPO, then, I guess, how does that reflect back on Envision Eugene?
It was more about the regional, I mean, that was the intent of that comment, was to say, we already have ongoing work that, where we collaborate regionally at the MPO, with the MPO, and not, and that's completely separate from the question of the five and 10-year check-ins. There's, that isn't related.
That's a different, different track. I'm just trying to understand this more fully, how, so the regional planning by the MPO, then, does go into our decision-making as far as how we form Envision Eugene? That we try to do it within the regional planning that occurs at the MPO level?
For example, the transportation planning that's happening now, we will be feeding in our land use decisions that we make as part of Envision Eugene into that process. And there's been a constant back and forth between those two processes, so that we can make sure that we're planning for land use and transportation together. So it's making sure that there's that constant connection between our decisions and the things that happen regionally.
Okay. Still trying to make, get a correlation there as to how MPO decisions affect decisions that are made by the city council, or vice versa.
I don't think there's any direct policy decisions that are made by the MPO that factor into our, building our land use plan, our comprehensive plan. And obviously, as you're aware, our, we sit on the MPO body for making, in terms of the MPC, for making regional transportation planning decisions. And so, there's complimentary, and there's overlap, and they both work within straight state frameworks for transportation, and we're working within one for land use. But I'm not aware of any other sort of feeding in to our process. This is an independent process that we're working on as a city of Eugene, just as Springfield's working on one independently themselves. Emily, is there anything I'm not catching on?
We're not operating in a vacuum. We're, we're trying to coordinate with.
Very much so.
And then the MPC has representation from each governmental body.
Including the cities of Coburg and...
ODOT.
ODOT, right. Land Transit District.
And the MPC does make recommendations, then?
They do.
By unanimous vote of the MPC?
I believe, I believe that there has to be at least one affirmative vote from each jurisdiction to have an overall affirmative...
So one, one affirmative vote, and each jurisdiction, does each jurisdiction have two members on the MPC?
Yes.
So the two members of the MPC, if they're in agreement on every jurisdiction, then, so the two members of the MPC have to be in agreement then. One of them, if there's a divergence of opinion there, then their decision's not able to be finalized?
Within the, within the jurisdiction itself, or on the board?
On the board.
So my understanding is that between the two cities and the county, essentially, each of them have sole veto power within the MPC. And so, but that means that both representatives have to vote in the negative. If one representative votes in the positive, it's as if it's a positive vote coming out of that particular jurisdiction.
Still struggling for a veto, Clark. It comes down to six representatives, then, that have to be in unanimity, and the two cities and the county.
Can I give you another turn, Pat?
They don't have to be in unanimity, it just has to have at least one affirmative vote from each one of those three jurisdictions in order to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Unless, so if there's two negative votes, it's a veto power.
Chris.
Thanks. Just quickly, I appreciate the effort you're going through to try to develop some planning and organization around uncertainty. It's not hard to plan uncertainty, but you can plan what you will try to do in the case of uncertainty, and how, what mechanisms you have in place. I really appreciate trying to do that. And you rely, when you do that, on information, whether it's data or whatever. And I think it's an interesting discussion around the notion of what do we need as data versus what do we need as knowledge? And I think we can compile enormous amounts of data, but if we're not able to understand what it is we're looking at, we're not going to be able to use it effectively. And so I think the best is, and I appreciate looking at the history, and the fact that we have a history that we can look at is an enormous benefit to us, because, for the reasons you showed, that, that trend historically is an extraordinarily valuable piece of knowledge to have. At the same time, we can accelerate the rate of measure, if you think of the history as the baseline, and we want to benchmark, we can benchmark on a more rapid basis so that we can build more points along that continuum. I don't know if you want to make a lot of changes as a result of that kind of constant accessing data. You want the data, but you still want to be real deliberate about when you actually implement a change based on that. You don't want to do it every, it's kind of like the person who invests in the stock market, and they keep buying and selling based on what they read in the morning paper. That's not a good system to use. But we do need, we do need to have that data. They look at the paper anyway, just to see where things are going. So I think it's a monitoring and then adjusting process that really is where you're trying to get to. And I'm, I think the monitoring can definitely have some additional elements to it, but the adjustment needs to be very deliberate. And that's the part that I really like, is that you are working in a very deliberate way. And then we also talk about the desire to get to an outcome that we want, as opposed to just reacting to this information. And, you know, Bob Chadwick talks a lot about imagining your best outcome. I would probably say that in this context, we really need to talk about our best reality, because I think our best reality is what the data, the knowledge, and the information will, will tell us is what we should aspire to. So I agree, aspirationally, we need to go somewhere, but rather than say, let's just wish for what it is we would like to as a, as a high-level aspiration, let's look at the knowledge of what we know and what our trends have been and what our monitoring shows us, and seek out the best reality that we can achieve. What is our best reality? And I think that's what you're trying to do here. I mean, I can see in here, this is what you're trying to get to, and as a council, I think we should support that effort, because it involves a little bit of risk. When you talk about, you know you're going to be 100% wrong, of course you will. Not 100% wrong in the macro sense, but 100% wrong in terms of the little incremental things that we will need to adjust to. And I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's a case of trying to get to a place where we're willing to try things, that we just aren't reactive or just trying to deal with what lands on us, but that we're actually trying to get out in front of things, and having that kind of information can help guide us. And even though we have to deal with the realities at the federal level and at the state level, and how that impacts us, there's still, if we, if we know, maybe we can do better preparation to sort of blunt those significant ups and downs and keep us on a more level course. And I would point out from the conversation we had, because I think it's important to point out for anybody that's listening, but also remind ourselves that we do have a regional prosperity plan. We do have a, an ambitious plan that we have worked on together and continue to work on a daily basis with not only Springfield, but Lane County, the two chambers of commerce, the University of Oregon, Lane Community College, and K through 12, all of those partners to try to move the dial here. And people are really working hard at this, so I'm hoping that through time, we'll see that, we will be able to see if we're making some progress with those, with those aspirations and goals that we have, and if they really make sense or not. And then, in terms of what Pat was asking, the way that I see it is the state sort of sets the framework in which we have to go after dealing with our transportation needs and finances. And we, and we also had the federal government telling us we have certain parameters to work in with, to go after funds from that level. And we're in a much more powerful position when we all work together at the MPO level, and we all work together at the regional, the ACT level, and that's what we're all trying to learn, how to leverage what we've got as much as we can. So we learn those parameters, we're working with our partners, and then we take what you all decide around the table and plug that in, as does Springfield, as does county. So that's kind of how that, that works. George, you haven't talked yet, so I'm going to let you go, and then I'll, Pat and Alan in the queue, and Betty.
Yeah, my comments are around the, the two graphs that you showed as far as the population growth and employment growth. And, you know, it's nice that we have the history that shows the cycles every 10 years, but to me, it's like we're taking an attitude of, well, it's going to happen in 10 years anyway. With the technology that we have now, and with the tracking that we're going to be doing, I think as a city, we should be more aggressive and take that information and carve out our own destiny instead of letting it happen to us. I mean, you know, it's, like I said, it's, it's great that we have that, that 30-year or 60-year history, but why do we have to sit there and let it happen to us? Let's, let's make our own history. So, you know, is making adjustments every 10 years, is that the right way to go? We don't know. At this point, we don't know. Getting that information on real-time, evaluating it on a yearly basis or a five-year basis, let's take that information at that time, since we've already done the collection of that data, and let's see if we need to make some changes at that point, instead of waiting for the 10-year mark to everybody else go into a downturn or an upturn, or whatever the case may be. So I just don't think we should let history dictate where we're going in this particular instance. And then, just a little note in the AIS on the Corvallis currently provides a monitoring report. It says, "This report is provided, it can be found at this link," and it says, "link." It doesn't show what the link is. So if you could send that to us, I'd like to see that.
Link one.
We will do monitor the plans better than that.
Thank you.
But would you like to see that link to look at the report? Okay.
In real time?
Yes.
Not just the word link.
I'm going to let Betty go next, what she has to say.
That's real good, that's real good technology.
I pointed my pen at that word, link, and nothing happened. Well, I agree with the people who said we should think about our aspirations rather than what, but I, I want to say that we don't all aspire to the same thing. And maybe all the citizens of Eugene do not aspire to whatever we collectively aspire to either. But I think we're a long way from knowing how the community feels about what we're talking about. And I also wanted to say that we can regulate things, and I'm agreeing with people, except I agree in a different way, I think. I mean, my aspirations are probably different than the ones I think we should have. And as for influencing things ourselves, we can, through regulations or through dropping regulations. And I think that we should, once we decide what we, as a community, want to do, then we can take actions to make those things happen. But there are some people who would like to expand all over the countryside and be as big as we can, and then there are other people who really, like me, who think it's much more important to preserve our forests and our agricultural lands and to contain our growth. Thank you.
Well, that's certainly part of Envision Eugene. We have, what, last two, Pat and Alan, and we're going to switch to the next topic.
I agree with Councilor Taylor. We do all aspire to different things. And that was, that was really the line of my questioning regarding the MPC. Just wanted to make sure that the MPC does present us with a balanced approach that recognizes that we aspire to different things. Thank you.
Alan?
It's linked electronically in a copy, so if you just click on that word, link, it goes there.
Oh, really?
But you have to have the electronic version.
Yeah.
But you have to double-click it on paper.
The question I have is about flex, is about flexibility, and, you know, one of the things that I was talking about early on was the making irrevocable 20-year land use decisions based on information that we know inevitably is going to be wrong. And so, having a process or a program that is flexible enough for us to revisit that on an ongoing basis. We had talked about, so if you, if you just have a UGB that says, okay, it's now here, and all of this is, is open, but we really, you know, at the end of 20 years, only needed to go halfway there, or maybe twice as far. We talked about having the flexibility to make short-term adjustments and maybe hold some areas in reserve, and in case we're wrong about how far the UGB goes out, or how does that get implemented until all of it?
I'm looking at Emily, because the issue of holding in reserve is one that I think there's some legal challenges to being able to do that. Do you want to come sit here?
That, there's been a lot of discussions between staff and I think the CRG that have continued beyond the larger group, that have made that idea seem, I think, less vital and necessary. You used the famous jaws of uncertainty earlier. I think everyone feels like, we've come to grips with the fact that we're not going to be spot-on with our assumptions, but we are extremely educated, and especially with a real commitment that we'll be in our land use plans to check in with, with the expectation that we may make changes at those periods of time, make it less, less enticing to go with this sort of novel idea of, that you're referring to, sort of holding a reserve. We're going to have the research to know that if we end up at a five- or 10-year mark, and we have experienced significant growth and more employment than we expected to in a 10-year period, and we're ready to, we find we need more land, the research that's been done is going to make it a lot easier than what you've gone through right now to make that happen. We already know what's out there. So a lot of that legwork has been done. So I'd say, right now, that idea is not on the table and not likely to be part of what staff are asking manager to consider for recommendation.
My initial problem with it was that, since we didn't have any maps at that point, there was the potential that we'd have these big swaths of land that we would bring into the UGB, and the first place that would get developed would be at the very end, at the furthest part away, instead of some orderly, systematic development from a, from a services standpoint, which made a lot of sense. So you wouldn't necessarily just provide all the services to the last point and then, then work your way backwards. That doesn't make any sense, you'd do it the other way around. But when I look at this attachment C, the, the reality is, is that the land that potentially included in the UGB expansion is little bits scattered all around the periphery, except for maybe down here in the LCC basin area. So other than that, so it really is just little parcels that would be brought in. That could be developed all at once.
It could be, but even so, the market really kind of controls the extension of services to a large degree, so even though those aren't the huge swaths that you might have been concerned about earlier, for an individual to come in and develop a parcel of property that's pretty far removed, still within the new UGB, but pretty far removed from where services end, it's extraordinarily expensive, it's difficult.
They would have to pay for it.
They would have to pay for it in the way that we operate. And so, it's sort of a natural consequence that things begin to develop in a kind of adjacent to the urban growth boundary and move out in most situations, unless like, they come in and do the whole thing, like you suggested.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's it. And we're going to now move on to
I think we just started. That's a good segue to there.
Calm, Mr. Segway.
Thanks, Jason.
Jaws of uncertainty are always a good segue.
On set at once.
Thank you. Again, my name is Alyssa Hansen. And today, I'm going to be giving you an update of our urban growth boundary study areas. This is essentially an update of the analysis that we've been doing since our last review with you in November. And I'm going to start with this graphic that I think is pretty familiar to you all. The top blue line represents our total single-family housing need. Just to back up, I'm only talking about single-family housing today. The green bar represents the capacity or where we're going to accommodate our needed housing. And then the purple at the bottom there represents actually, you know, how we're going to accomplish that. Today, we are focused on this orange square over here, which is our remaining need. And today, that number is somewhere between 660 homes to 1,475 homes. And those homes will either be accommodated through a redesignation, which Heather O'Donnell kind of walked you through some of that information within the last couple of weeks, and/or through a UGB expansion. And while we do think that there's a portion of that that can be accommodated through the redesignation, it's pretty likely that there is going to be a modest urban growth boundary expansion. So just a quick review. So back in November, I talked to you about the state's process for the UGB expansion. Just two things I want to reiterate from that is first, that the process is fairly tightly controlled by state law. There's a host of statutes and rules that prescribe for us how and where we can look at for expansion. And then second, the first areas that we have to consider are those that are on the map that's attached to the packet. Those are lands in the county that are designated either for residential, commercial, or industrial. And those are called first priority lands. So this map, once again, shows those first priority lands that were part of our original study area. And at that last work session, we walked through each of these and talked about kind of the different constraints, maybe the opportunities in these different areas. We also talked about whether or not they're suitable for single-family residential, you know, housing at urban levels. And these are the factors that we looked at. Are there landslide areas or the natural hazards? Are there natural resource protection measures such as wetlands? Are they constrained by severe slopes? Are they in the floodplain or floodway? And once again, public facilities or public services such as, you know, utilities, can they be served by water, wastewater, streets, electricity? At the end of that session, I believe it was Councilors Link that said, wow, it would be great if you had a map that showed which ones you've excluded based on that walk around the urban growth boundary and a little bit more information on the areas that you're looking at. And so that's really what today is. So these orange Xs that just appeared on the screen there, those are the study areas that we're excluding or screening from our study at this point. And there's a number of factors. I won't walk through each one. I'll just give you a couple of examples. So this property up here, as you recall, along Aubrey Lane, is immediately adjacent to heavy industrial land. It just didn't seem like that would be a compatible location for single-family residential uses. So we've excluded that one. There are others that don't even touch the, you know, urban growth boundary. And we've excluded those that aren't adjacent to the urban growth boundary. They would, you know, we can't create islands. We would have to take in some intervening lands in order to get services to them. And we're not sure if we could justify that or not. So we've excluded those that are not adjacent to the urban growth boundary. Also excluded those that are due to topographic constraints are actually difficult in providing services to. So the area down off Dillard, given the street system over there and the topography, that is an area that would be extremely difficult to provide wastewater and water to. And actually, there's some transportation difficulties internally there as well that would make it extremely difficult to see single-family residential there at urban levels. So these, those are the areas that we have kind of knocked off of, or screened out of our study area. Now, next, these two areas are what remains of our first priority lands. Those two areas are what remain in our study area. And they're still under consideration. And then actually, we have, you know, to make it fun for you, we've added a third area, which just right up there, just south of Clear Lake. And I'll talk more a little bit about that one in a minute on how come that one has appeared. So I'm going to walk you through these three areas. And I'm going to talk about, kind of just review the constraints, similar to what we did last time. We now have housing capacity estimates. So we have some recent estimates of how much housing we could reasonably see in these areas. And it's based on a methodology that we used for the partially vacant and vacant lands inside the urban growth boundary. And then finally, we have some more information about providing services and utilities to these areas. So I'm going to start here with the Bailey Hill, Gimble Hill study area, which is kind of southwest of the urban growth boundary. And not surprisingly, it's along Gimble Hill and Bailey Hill Road. Now, this map, let's see, just to orient you, the black here shows the outline of the study area. Gimble Hill Road is along here, and Bailey Hill Road is here. The red and white line represents the urban growth boundary as it exists, and the green lands are city-owned parkland. You may have noticed that this is slightly bigger than the area that shows on that original map. So we have just slightly expanded the study area. We do have the ability to include additional lands in case it's, you know, efficient and helps us provide services to those lands. You know, in some cases, such as water, you need to provide a loop system. So we've tried to allow for enough land for that. This area is about 365 acres. You can see outside of, it's surrounded by forest lands outside the urban growth boundary. Inside the urban growth boundary, it's predominantly adjacent to lands that are planned for single-family. And it's also in an area that's well-served by parkland, much of which is part of the Ridgeline Trail system. So in terms of constraints, just once again, this green represents protected wetlands. And this brown color over here represents steep slopes, so slopes that are greater than 25 percent, that we don't typically see much development, if any, on. So you'll see, there's just the one pocket of wetlands that are, we know of, that's protected. And then there are several pockets of those steep slopes. In terms of housing capacity, this area, once you take into account the slopes and the wetlands and the streets and existing development, there's a capacity for up to 800 homes. And that really depends on, you know, how much of this area that perhaps was going to be included in the urban growth boundary.
Do you know how many acres are constrained, the wetlands and the
I don't have that on. No, I don't have that with me.
Get that first, please.
Sure. Can follow up with that. Let's see. So as I said, there's up to 800 homes. It kind of just depends on the extent of an expansion. In terms of utilities and services for transportation, we do know through some of the recent work of the Transportation System Plan update that there's likely going to be some congestion concerns on both West 11th, West 18th, and actually Bailey Hill between those two. You know, within the next 20 years, there'll be some projected constraints. We also have been working closely with the Transportation System Plan to ensure that, you know, for any place that we add densities, that the streets will be able to, you know, support those densities. So and you'll be hearing more about, I know that they're coming back to you in March, March 12th, I believe it is, to give you an update on their project. But I will say that we're working very closely with them on making sure that, you know, if and where we do expand, that the surrounding street systems could actually handle the additional homes.
Actually, that update will be after the break. It won't be on the 12th.
Okay, sorry. Be after that. So in terms of fire, we've recently had conversations with fire about, and I think they, I could call them a service, not a utility, with fire about, you know, their ability to actually serve these areas. So given the proximity of this area to other fire stations, it appears that they would be able to meet their response times. They have, and I'm not going to pretend to have this memorized, but they have certain response times that they need to make it from the fire station to the emergency with, I think it's, they had to make their within five minutes 80% of the time. So they think that because of the location of fire stations around here, that this one, this area would be within that range. In terms of water, that is one of the more challenging issues here because EWEB likes to provide a looped system. And given the road configurations, it's unknown whether or not that could actually occur here. If it doesn't, it does mean that there's kind of less water pressure and less reliability. So that's kind of something we still need a little bit more information on here. In terms of wastewater, you've heard about the area inside the urban growth boundary previously. It is designated for residential use, and we do have plans to eventually serve it with wastewater. We have some, kind of some high-level estimates, just so you can understand the magnitude of what that would cost. So the city share or the capital cost, which would be for a pump station and a force main, would be about 2.5 million for the part inside the urban growth boundary. And there would really be efficiencies gained by adding land here because you wouldn't need an additional pump station or force main. Those lands could actually use the utilities that were extended for this property, for inside the urban growth boundary. And like I said, that is a high-level estimate. You know, more plant detailed work would, engineering work would have to figure it out. But I just wanted to give that to you kind of as a, you know, magnitude. So there really would be some efficiencies gained. So I think what's appealing about this area is that there would be efficiencies because utilities have to be extended to the properties, you know, that are immediately adjacent, that are inside the urban growth boundary. So there'd be some efficiency gained there. And, you know, there's a fairly decent capacity in this area for homes. So moving on to the next area, this is the Crest-Chambers study area, just south of Crest and, actually, south of Chambers, west of Crest. Once again, just to orient you, the red and white is the urban growth boundary. The black is the study area. Green are the parklands. Chambers is right here. Crest comes right along here, and then they turn into Lorraine over here. And Blanton is to the south along here. This whole area is 725 acres. It's adjacent to single-family residential inside the urban growth boundary. And then outside the urban growth boundary, it's surrounded by kind of, you know, mostly forest, but there's a few agricultural parcels, some marginal lands, and obviously some of city-owned parkland as well.
Is that Crest Elementary, the white spot up near the urban growth boundary?
Right there. Yes, right there. In terms of constraints, there are wetlands, protected wetlands along the Spencer Creek. And there's also pockets of the steep slopes once again. So taking those into effect, into consideration, as well as existing development patterns, I believe there's an estimated capacity for up to 1,200 homes in this particular area. In terms of utilities and services for transportation, as I mentioned before, West 18th, we know will likely have some congestion concerns within the next 20 years. We'll be working with the Transportation System Plan to address those. There's also some more localized concerns. You know, as I pointed out, three streets, those are really the only three streets that are leading into this area. So there is, at this time, you know, a lack of connectivity. That is something that could possibly be overcome through some master planning and some, you know, some area planning. There's some dead-end street connections up over here. So there could be, you know, more routes brought into this area. And some of the streets would probably eventually need to be upgraded to urban levels of design. Also, fire had some concerns about being able to meet their response times in this area. And that's mostly related to the street configuration, given the width, the topography in this area, and the lack of, you know, connections to this area. So they definitely had some concerns about that in their ability to meet response times. Water, it's a little bit challenging. Once again, this is on kind of the other side of the ridge. So getting utilities there's, got to go up and over. And once again, EWEB does like a looped system. So we would need to make sure that, you know, that there was enough land to ensure that the water could be looped so that there'd be enough water pressure for folks. Wastewater is also a little bit challenging, but doable here. It is just slightly expensive. So at a minimum, to provide a pump station here, and, so the adjacent area, let me back up. The adjacent area, as you can see, is developed with single-family. That area is all served by wastewater. But those systems, pump station and whatnot, could not also serve this area. So this whole area would need its own pump system. It would need a force main and a gravity line. Depending on the extent of expansion in this area, if you took in a little bit, took in the whole thing, that cost would range from, this is an estimate, the city cost would range from 3.75 to about 5.4 million. So even if you just took in a couple hundred acres, it would be about 3.75. You know, if you took in the whole thing, it would be 5.4. That's a high-level estimate once again. But just to give you, you know, just on the scale there of what that would cost. There's also not, unlike Bailey Hill, which we know there's capacity kind of downstream in the rest of the system for that, it's unclear if there's enough capacity downstream from this because it is a fairly well-developed area. So there may need to be some upgrades or new lift stations. I don't have an estimate for that kind of, but farther downstream. And maybe not initially either. That might be something long-term. So what, you know, what was appealing about this area is that it's adjacent to existing single-family, and there'd be some compatibility there. And that there would be that ability to master plan, to make sure that, you know, that there, it's a large enough area, we could look at, you know, where should streets go? Where should utilities go? How can we protect the creek, you know, and other important natural resources? Is there room for parkland? You know, so that would give you that opportunity to do that. I'd say one of the things that's, you know, kind of a negative right now would really be the cost of extending services to this area.
Would Chambers be extended then?
I guess that's something we would look at through a master planning effort. So finally, this is the last area that sprung on you today, the Clear Lake study area. This is on the south side of Clear Lake, just west of Highway 99. And just to orient you, this is 99 here, and this is Clear Lake here. Now, this isn't an obvious site, given what I've told you about the state's framework for looking at expansion areas. But for a couple reasons, particularly its location, we think that there's some potential that makes it worth exploring. So the area outlined in black, those four large pieces, four properties, it's more than four, but those four areas outlined in black represent the area that we're looking at right now for single-family housing. This here, this kind of looks yellow on the other screen, is, that is the Bethel School District site that they are looking at and we're proposing for expansion, an urban growth boundary expansion. And this area here is the Golden Gardens Community Park, which we're also proposing to include in the urban growth boundary so that we can have a community park there. You know, utilities will need to be extended, wastewater, water will need to be extended to serve both of those sites. Also, north of Clear Lake Road is an area that we are, that's still under consideration for future employment through an urban growth boundary expansion. And there's quite a lot of employment over here to the east. So those are, you know, two, or several reasons why we are considering this particular area. It's also vacant, or predominantly vacant, which really gives us a chance to, you know, plan it from the ground up. And I'll get more to that in just a minute. In terms of constraints, there's a little bit of floodplain right here. So there's just that piece that pops into the floodplain. I think you're kind of overwhelmed by Golden Gardens over here. But the orange, the orange represents the airport noise contour. And if you remember, I talked about last time, that is an area where the FAA discourages residential development. Thankfully, that sort of corresponds with where the floodplain is as well. In terms of capacity, so this area, let me back, is 143 acres, and it has a capacity of up to 520 homes. And you notice that's
Which side is the
Oh, the contour falls in here. I'm sorry. It's, yeah, this is the area that falls within the contour. So in terms of transportation, Highway 99 seems to have adequate capacity, at least according, you know, to our studies thus far, and we'll continue to look at that. Fire feels fairly comfortable with this area. It's, you know, it's in close enough proximity to the stations. And assuming that there was some kind of north-south connection here, there would be, they'd be able to get at it from more than one direction and be able to meet their response. it from more than one direction and be able to meet their response times. Utilities could be extended pretty much without difficulty. Water, actually thought that they would be able to extend without difficulty. In terms of wastewater, there's an existing pump station that's kind of just south of here that would require some upgrades to serve the school site and the park site. And I think that could, now it's only about $400,000. You know, it's a high-level estimate of what that would cost to be able to provide services Another reason that this area is really is appealing is actually the ability to master plan it and create a 20-minute neighborhood. As I mentioned, it's, you know, it's near a school site, it's near a park site, it's near existing employment, and potentially future employment sites. We'd have a real ability to coordinate the utilities, services, parks, schools, to make sure that, you know, the natural resources were adequately protected, make sure that we were able to address compatibility, you know, with the adjacent employment uses in the park site. And also be able to look at whether or not it made sense to add some complementary uses, whether that was small-scale commercial, or maybe even some, a little bit of multifamily housing to, you know, have a variety of housing mixes in this area.
Can you point out Jerry's on that map?
I think it's right there.
Right there.
Yes. So, once again, some employment right there.
How far a rock throw it is to the-
So, you know, for those reasons, we, you know, find this area to be, to be an appealing area, and that's why, you know, those are the reasons why we've included it in the So, this is just a summary of the housing capacity. So, the first column just has the name of the study area, the second column is the total acreage in that particular area, and the third column represents the total capacity. Two things to get out of this slide is, one, that while the different areas have different capacities, and that's really based on topography, what other constraints there are, existing development patterns. I mean, for instance, Clear Lake, you know, it's 143 acres, but yet you could get up to 520 homes, whereas with, you know, Bailey Hill, Gimple Hill, you know, you only get, you know, less than 300 more homes for just, you know, a couple hundred more acres. So, you know, the areas are all very different, and you get different capacities. But the other thing to take home with this is that you'll see that with all of those three areas added together, we have the capacity, they have the capacity, for up to 2,500 homes. And our total remaining land need is less than 1,500 homes, and that's not even taking into, you know, that would be without any re-designations of any of those lands, would be, you know, the 1,475. So, amongst these three, we have enough land to meet any expansion need, if we have one. So, moving on, just in terms of next steps for this analysis, we'll be refining our land need number, and we'll be taking that range and actually landing on a point, and be providing a recommendation where we think that expansion should occur. We'll be seeking public input through a variety of places to, you know, make sure that the public, you know, understands how we got there and taken their concerns about those areas. We'll also be doing additional natural resource inventories. We will be required to do a Goal Five inventory to check out wetlands, riparian areas, for any expansion areas. And then finally, as I mentioned, you know, master planning, I think we would want to make a commitment to master planning. None of these areas would be immediately available for development, assuming the urban growth boundary was expanded, because utilities would need to be expended, extended, and expended. There would be, you know, they'd need to be on the capital improvement program, and the city would need to determine how to fund those. So, in the meantime, we'd have the ability to do some master planning, and really to figure out how to use those lands most efficiently, you know, to coordinate the utilities and services, how to protect the natural resources, make sure there's adequate, you know, connections and parkland if needed, and look at complementary uses as well, whether or not it be small-scale commercial, or maybe a small pocket of multifamily housing. So, that's something we'd really definitely want to do for the expansion areas. And that is all I have on the expansion areas.
Yeah, I was just going to talk a little bit about next steps. So, as you're well aware, we've been coming here for many, many months now, giving you in-depth work sessions on a number of topics, covering all the pillars, going into very specific, I suppose, detail about some specific study areas such as partially vacant land and housing mix and economic development. I think you should all be receiving an emalior certificate of certified planning completion from having done all this coursework. But this is, and, and as we've been doing this with you, we've also been working thousands of hours with the Technical Resource Group and Subcommittee of the TRG, working through more and more of those details to answer questions so that we can build towards our recommendation. So, at this point, the next steps, on March 14th, the city manager will be bringing you a draft recommendation. Beginning at the end of March, we're going to hold six community forums, end of March into the beginning of April. And we have had, or we will have ongoing online open houses. We currently have some online now, but we'll be doing online open house and survey on our webpage, and then leading to an April 16th public hearing, and then a council action on approving a proposed, a proposed package to move forward. And so, I know I've said this before, but just to make the distinction for anybody tuning in who hasn't been, this isn't a, we're not asking for action on the land use process yet, on a formal, formalized adoption, which we will be doing a year-plus from now after we go through and do all of our additional study work that has to happen. So, that's, that's what we have, and I know there's a number of questions, so.
Okay, I have Betty, George Polling, Pat, Mike, George Brown. So, let's start with Betty, oh, and Alan.
Start with Betty.
In the Clear Lake area, if you had multifamily housing, how many homes could you get in there?
I don't know the answer to that. It depends if we were doing, it depends, are you talking about the whole acreage?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure, because I'm not sure what amount was taken out for the constraints there.
But it seems like the best place for multi, of the ones you're talking about.
Well, I want to just have you keep in mind that our multifamily housing need is being met primarily inside the urban growth boundary. What Alyssa was describing, so we have an unmet single-family housing need. We think this is a suitable site for further study. If that happens, particularly given that there's a Bethel School site next door, it probably makes sense to have a mix of housing types, and so there would be complementary housing types like multifamily, but it wouldn't likely be predominantly multifamily. Or if it, if it did, it was strictly based on the market demand for it, not for our trying to meet our land need for that type of housing. Does that make sense?
I guess so. It seems like a good, with the big, with the huge park nearby.
Right, absolutely, and I think the market would play that out.
Mm-hmm. And for the Crest area, I don't see how you could get transportation there from, it's, it's difficult to get up there now.
I think that's one of the challenges that Alyssa highlighted for you.
Yeah.
One would hurry, yes.
Chambers would, you said it would be something to consider in the future, but Chambers would probably have to be extended, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I don't know without further study, so. Definitely some challenges up there.
Well, Crest Drive is not able to take any more traffic.
Okay, we're all getting a little punchy comments on the side here. George Polling, go ahead.
You done, Betty?
What's punchy? Yes, I guess I am. Who was punching, me or you?
The, the parcels that were identified off of Clear Lake, are those currently farmlands?
Yes.
Do you know what class farmland it is, by any chance?
They do have some high-value soils. I couldn't tell you the percentage, but they do have, you know, some high-value soils and some soils that are not high-value.
And then back to the question I asked earlier about the number of acres that were constrained, it'd be nice to have it on all three because, I guess, first of all, the number of housing capacity on these three different parcels, was that based on the total number of acres, or is that based on the total number of unconstrained acres based on units per acre?
You know, it's based on a lot of things. So, we took out a certain amount for existing homes, and then different densities are applied depending on the slope of the lot. So, you know, obviously, a flat lot, we, there's a higher density assumed than there are as you go up a slope lot. So, there's a number of things, you know, like the protected wetlands were taken out off the top for that.
I think during our discussions, there needs to be a distinction between the total acreage of these different parcels as opposed to the usable acres, because I know there's, there's going to be an argument somewhere down the line that we're getting too many acres into the urban growth boundary, even though we know of some, some parcels that, you know, like maybe 50% of the acreage is, can't use it for anything because of the constraints. So, when we have these discussions, if we could break these acres down to total numbers versus usable numbers, I think it'll make the discussion a lot easier. And then a little bit of a discussion on, on how the estimated capacity of homes was determined for each of those three parcels.
Pat, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Boy, this is pretty exciting really to me. I think you've identified areas that are some of the nicest parts of Eugene that are directly adjacent to the urban growth boundary. I look at the Clear Lake side, for instance, that's some of the prettiest parts of Eugene inside the area that we would expect to, the city to expand to. It really is lovely out there. You know, I would love to visit my grandchildren in homes built in any one of these three areas. Good work on that. Question is, it seems that you've talked significantly about wastewater and sewer and water and electricity and loops and downstream, various things. It sounds like you have good estimates of how to go about addressing the issues of that sort of infrastructure. Electricity, I suppose, natural gas is all kind of built into that. There's one that keeps coming up, one type of facility that keeps coming up that I've not really heard us talking about how we are going to address it, and at least two of these sites are directly impacted by the fact that we don't have transportation facilities to serve them. We currently don't. We have West 18th that is already, 20 years from now, if it's, if some things don't change on West 18th, 20 minutes from now, you're going to be stuck in traffic, not 20 years from now. So, and West 11th is the same way. So, just a discussion at some point of how are we looking at that in a larger picture? We had a larger picture, of course, that is no longer the picture that we have for the future transportation in West Eugene. So, I guess, I can't expect you to answer that right now as the red light flashes, but, you know, I think clearly it's at the forefront of my mind, because we like, we have all this land out there that is wonderfully usable in terms of creating places for people to live, and, but we just aren't able to supply it with the transportation facilities that are needed to do it.
Well, I guess I would just offer that. I think, obviously, you bring up a good point about transportation, but I think all the infrastructure that would have to be extended is all part of the policy decision that gets made. And so, you know, we've offered three, three locations for study that we think we can achieve our unmet land need within any one of those or a combination. Clearly, if we tried to take land from all three, that's not the best efficient use of resources because you then have to extend resources, or, sorry, infrastructure to all three of those. So, I think part of it's doing a little bit more analysis on costs, and then getting a handle on where do you have the most gain in term, you know, citing next to a school makes a lot of sense. Transportation barriers versus providing sewer or water, and so I think that's all part of the, the range of issues and criteria that you'll be considering in making these policy decisions.
Thank you. I, I'm sure that, I know that you're right on top of that. You know, North Terry Street abuts directly with the Clear Lake, with the Bethel School District property. It's a three-lane street that just starts at a dead end, and it's, clearly it was designed to go beyond that. When we were building the school that is now Meadowview School, that was the original site we're going to build that school on. And the reason we didn't build is because the services were not extended beyond that point on Terry Street, even though they seemed to have but right there, and because of the airport constraints, the sound constraints of the airport. It's nice to see that some mitigations occurred there, so we are able to look at that property for development for the future. At the time, we ended up with Meadowview School, and nobody is unhappy with that decision by any stretch of the imagination, but it's good to see that this land is going to be used at some point. Thank you.
Mike.
You kind of both touched on what I was going to say, the transportation facilities is part of it, and then Alyssa started with the next part that says. I suppose the next several questions fall under the, the one big question of why aren't these phantom acres? And I would say first, wouldn't we say that SDC collection's probably at the low point of, I don't know, historic level, low collection right now?
I can't speak to that with any knowledge. I won't.
Well, if, what we're saying is that we want to put these acres there that are in these particular places, and that's great. They, it seems like, those seem like good plans, and I appreciate all the work very much. But there's a great deal of infrastructure that needs to be added to the CIP and get done and put out there, and I'm wondering under the current financial environment of where's the state going to fund anything with transportation?
That's right.
How are we at record-low SDC collections? How in the world in the next 20 years are we going to ever fund the infrastructure necessary to do that when we're pushing stuff out on the CIP year after year? So, I mean, do we have a realistic plan about how we're going to be able to provide the infrastructure necessary to make those acres not phantom acres?
Alyssa, do you want to speak to conversations with Public Works, or do you want me to touch on that? Well, so, we have been working with Public Works-
Forgive me for interrupting you again.
Yep.
I mean, there's also, there's space to build out Bertelson off 18th and so forth, that there's just no way there's ever going to be any infrastructure built to access those, right?
Right. Well, I think that feasibility has to come into play, obviously, in your decision-making, and so we'll try to bring you the best information we can in terms of what our financial planning suggests in terms of long-term capital improvement plans for any of this infrastructure. So, and obviously, we've been talking with Public Works about that.
Can we build a system where instead of, you know, the, one, one of these policy decisions driving, the next one driving, the next one, where we do it more holistically so we're making decisions that can support one another rather than just continuing to chase our, our tail about what we can actually do or not actually do? I'd like to see us change our decision-making process to be more parallel in that way.
My understanding, particularly with respect to this, there are, there are a lot of policy calls you're going to have to make. When I bring the recommendation, some of those calls that you will make will drive some of those kinds of things, and so they won't be one-offs. There'll be sort of this whole package of things that are going to have to work. And so, when we talk about particularly land and infrastructure, part of that, if you say, yes, that's where we're going to expand the UGB, what you really are also saying is this is the infrastructure that's needed to get there, and we are, that, we have the ability, a reasonable ability to have that get put in over the next 20 years in order to accomplish that, right? So, so you are-
Historically, our community does the other way around, or we talk about the aspirational stuff that we put in place, and we do a lot of great planning to do it, but then everybody in the world fights the actual battles of getting the infrastructure in place to actually see it occur.
It still can have some of that, but the intent of this is, is that you're, you're approving a holistic seven-pillar strategy to get us to where we want to go. That's the intent.
Yes. More people like you, George Brown, Alan, Betty, it's just entered, we're almost out of time.
Thank you. Actually, two or three of my questions were answered by George's. You answered, we had the identical questions. So, I'll just skip up to, are the home capacity totals, are those, were those estimated on a combination of low density and medium density, or?
Those are completely on single-family homes, so low density. Yeah, because that's what we're-
But what kind of density? I mean, you know, a single-family home can be on an acre or two acres or three acres.
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, it's generally at urban levels.
That's what I meant by-
So, yeah, it would be at urban levels. I mean, our general average that we see is 3.8, but that tends to go down as, you know, as the, as the land gets more sloped. So, we actually had kind of grades of what densities were used on that.
To pick a lot of one levels.
Yeah, some of the land is constrained by the slope.
Absolutely.
Okay, then I guess my, my only other one was, I was looking at the Clear Lake map, and I'm just guessing that a lot of those two blocks, minus the constraints that you've showed us, if it's Class 1 and 2 soils, aren't those, can't those be regarded as a constraint?
They are not reg, I mean, so with the state's, their process, those are not lands that we can look at first. That doesn't mean that they're excluded from any type of expansion that we need to look at, at other, you know, we need to look at the first priority lands. So, like I said, there, these weren't obvious given the state's framework, but we do think there would be other reasons to justify these, including, you know, taking in surrounding land.
Yeah, I can see, I mean, it's right next to Highway 99, and all the services are just like right here. It would be relatively easily to extend them in there, but I hate the idea of covering up farmland, because once you do it, it's gone.